I've called this meeting to order. This is a Redmond City Council Study Session, held on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, commencing at 7:00 PM. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Nueva Camina, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Fields, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Salahudin, and myself, Council President Kritzer. There are three items on the agenda tonight. Redmond 2050, Phase Two Policies, Second Drafts, Planning Commission Recommendation, Phase Two, Amendments to the Redmond Zoning Code and Municipal Codes, and Council Talk Time. The first item on the agenda is Redmond 2050, Phase Two Policies, Second Drafts. Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this item. Director Helen?
Thank you. Good evening, Council President Kritzer, members of the council, Mayor. Good evening. Nice to be here this evening. Tonight, the Planning and Community Development staff are here to continue our discussion of the Phase Two elements of the Comprehensive Plan Second Drafts that are all part of Redmond 2050. Two weeks ago, council provided us with input on capital facilities, utilities, natural environment, and climate resilience and sustainability elements. Tonight, staff will introduce the second drafts of the land use, community development and design, and participation, implementation, and evaluation elements. All of the materials were provided in your January 9th packet, and if you go to those packet materials, the discussion for this evening begins on page 85. I'm joined tonight by Lauren Alpert, Odra Cardenas, I practiced too, Ian Lefcourt, and Jeff Churchill. And so to begin the meeting, I'm going to pass the microphone over to Jeff.
Thank you, Carol, and good evening, Mayor and council members. You've seen these slides before, so I won't spend a lot of time on them. But on the 9th, when we came, we described how the second drafts are kind of in the later drafts phase. And so what we're asking is if you see your input reflected in the later drafts, and are there things that you would like to see or would like to see revised as we bring these forward to the Planning Commission for a public hearing and study sessions later this spring? And I'm going to turn it directly over to Ian or Lauren to start the discussion on land use.
Hello. I'm Ian Lefcourt. I use the him pronouns. I'm a senior planner under Jeff. Lauren and I both were the primary leads for updating the land use element. And there's many elements to the comprehensive plan, but this really is kind of the main event. It's the star of the show. And so we tried to roughly divide it between residential, that's my authorship, and non-residential, that's Lauren's authorship. Now, obviously, there's a lot of overlap between those two pieces, especially when we're considering one of the primary themes we've heard for Redmond 2050, which is about those complete neighborhoods, that kind of holistic livable experience. And that's our first bullet point there on the input. It's just, we want those amenities close to home. Now, sometimes that means it's within a walkable or bikeable distance, sometimes that means it's within easy transit, or heck, just a short drive. Related to that is a second really big piece of feedback we've heard from a variety of different efforts, and that's reducing barriers to small businesses. We know that this is a huge component of realizing equity in our community, and there are many different pieces that help revenue. We also heard that we really want more friendly spaces for people to enjoy that, importantly, not identified here, don't really have a cost of attendance, right? Like, we just kind of want nice park spaces, or places you can go and feel safe and relax. And then, as always, our community was very environmentally conscious and noted that they wanted to protect drinking water. For the changes in the second draft, our first big change, as you may remember, is the adding of a narrative.
So we added a narrative. That's a change that happens in a lot of these second drafts, and it puts in context a lot of what's important, and especially in being the star of the show of land use, and especially adds in a lot of that input of what it is to create a complete community, and why that's so important to our community, and creating those walkable and rollable spaces that people can have access to amenities closer to their home. So it puts that in context. It also puts into context a lot of those major changes that we're going to be seeing in terms of our land use, and adds that narrative, and adds that into those policies so that they make sense.
We also took a look at our neighborhood land use designations and the associated zones. As a reminder, our land use element creates these high-level designations, and then there's associated zoning that must go into those designations. The neighborhood was brand-new. It's kind of this high-level, primarily residential, but with some non-residential. And the language was updated to both reflect new input, to make sure the umbrella of that designation covered all of the zones that we wanted to have in there. And importantly, we moved the neighborhood mixed-use zone from citywide mixed-use designation into that neighborhood land use designation. Why did we do that? Well, the structure intensity is intended to be approximately the same as neighborhood multifamily. And by allowing that non-residential kind of more mixed-use into there, we're able to address some of those first pieces that were talked about. Getting amenities closer to home, fostering small businesses. And through those pieces, we made sure that the language was updated and streamlined to make sure it was as plain-talked and accessible as possible.
We also updated the language that described our urban recreation and the parks and open space policies. There was a little confusion in the first draft of what those two different designations mean, so we added a lot of clarity in that, just to make it clear and made sure it was in line with our parks plan.
And speaking of clarity, that was a really big effort of the second change. We had many stakeholders providing their input, and so much of our effort here tried to make sure that everything was aligned. One example that our community advisory committee highlighted was, we went through and tried to use the phrase "accessible and active transportation." This helped by making sure it was consistent across and highlighting our emphasis on accessibility and equity. And another example that is one of the main threads in this entire piece is, we tried to provide an explanation of what complete neighborhoods is in the element itself one time, and then actually used that phrase "complete neighborhood" throughout. This made policies a lot easier to read. Instead of having a small paragraph added every time, we wanted to discuss complete neighborhoods. And that is it for the land use.
So speaking of equity, community development and design is a new chapter for the comp plan. It is a transition from the community preservation and/or community character and historic preservation chapter, and it also adds in our centers policies, our corridor policies, and new community design policies. And so this would be our first time seeing it all together. We've been bringing this to review in chunks and pieces in draft one, and so this is our first time adding it all encompassing. And this is one of our last chapters that we're authoring, and we're continually continuing to do community engagement on this. One of our big community engagement efforts has been in our partnership with Eastside for All, and actually co-creating a lot of our community engagement materials with them for this, and with our community partners that they brought together through our contract with them. So it's sort of setting the intent. The intent of the chapter is being expressed also through our work in engaging the community on this chapter. And so some of the things you see that were added was that narrative, and adding a lot of the material that we've, and the feedback that we've been receiving from them and from our efforts. So a lot of what the feedback that we've received so far is reinforcing some of the things that we've heard the last couple of years. So this is a direct result, you see an entire section on universal design. And some of the recent input that we've seen also from this chapter is asking for mobility device charging stations. So we included that in our centers policies, so that will be a priority in all of our centers going forward. So trying to take directly some of the feedback we've been hearing and adding that in. And I want to also emphasize that, you know, this is just the start, you know, like any of our Redmond 2050 chapters, like land use, like what you'll hear from Odra, and this is going to shape the regulations and shape, there'll be more actions going forward from this. This is just kind of setting the stage.
Good evening, council members. So for the participation, implementation, and evaluation, just a little bit of background on what this chapter is. It's more about a process, how we incorporate public participation into the planning process, how we're going to evaluate the comp plan once it's adopted, and what are we going to look for once we adopt this comprehensive plan? So the major, what we heard on the first draft was mostly talking about, like, using inclusive language, removing some terms like citizen, which are not reflective of what Redmond currently is. We have a big percentage of residents are non-citizens, so we tried to remove all those terms that are not inclusive. We also added new policies. One is for adding tribal consultation into the public participation policies, and another one to having a predictable development review process. So this chapter is a little bit different from others because it's more related to processes than actual, like, policies and actions.
Thanks. So tonight, we are continuing discussion of these second drafts. We would love to hear from council on what, again, if your input on the first draft, if you see it being reflected, and kind of is it on the right path as we put together final drafts for a planning commission review later this spring? And that ends the presentation, and we look forward to the discussion.
Thank you so much. Are there questions from the council? Councilmember Stewart?
Sure, I'll get us warmed up. I guess the first question might be for Council President Kritzer. Do you want to go category by category, or just kind of all questions all at once? There were three chapters.
Yeah, I guess we could go, I think we can do them all at the same time, unless it gets too unwieldy. If it does, then I'll pull us back.
Okay, cool. I have a couple of just like overarching comments, and then maybe a couple more granular things that can be just feedback for what comes next. So first and foremost, I don't think we can underestimate just how significant, like, all of this work getting to this stage is, and it's so beautiful, like, in this draft, all coming together. And it's already, it's getting to a place where we've actually been working on Redmond 2050 for a couple years now, right? So this is really starting to represent the current values of our community, and we're ready to get going. And I think nothing speaks to that more than the work on complete neighborhoods, and the trajectory that that puts our city on is so significantly different in the best possible ways, right? And I just am really excited and have so much gratitude for all of you, and all the commissioners, and all the volunteers, and the community engagement that's gone on to get us to this process, or to this place in the process. At this place in the process, we're looking really, really good. It looks like, you know, we are headed to a place that our community, that this all really matches the community feedback that I think that we're getting right now. So I just wanted to offer a moment of gratitude for that. Thank you. I did have a couple of things in the community design, development and design chapter. For instance, there was reference to in Overlake being bordered on all three sides from Bellevue, and it references that perhaps, you know, the staff, you all have been coordinating with the city of Bellevue. But I was wondering what council's role is in double-checking on that, or, I don't know, becoming more informed ourselves, just to make sure we're going to have harmony between our plans and Bellevue's plans, and maybe that's a conversation that this council might be interested in. And I wondered, too, on page 118, if we are to maybe someday expand that street grid in Overlake, that we, I wonder if we could tie that to the other direction of this chapter around cultural reflection, so that any new street names that might come online are also part of that program? So that was just a couple of my thoughts for the future, but I will let others jump in. Thank you.
Was that question about Bellevue one that you were hoping the staff would answer, or was it meant to be rhetorical?
I think it's a question for us, like, thank you for the question. A little bit of both. Like, I tend to, you know, trust the staff, like, they've got it, but it's sometimes nice to see it, too, or to hear a little bit more about it in the future. Or maybe we, this council used to do joint sessions with Bellevue. I'm not proposing work for work's sake, but it was just the thought that occurred to me, to make sure that we're getting harmony there. So, thanks.
Thank you. And I would just open it up for a moment to see if the staff has any thoughts and could share, especially since we have some new council members, on how we think of coordinating, especially in that Bell-Red corridor with Bellevue and our planning efforts.
I can speak to the staff coordination piece. We have regular meetings with Bellevue planning staff to learn about what their growth plans are for their comprehensive plan update, and for them to learn from us. And we do that also with our other neighbors as well. And that, and we have also a good working relationship with them day-to-day, especially for the transportation work, because as you probably know, they operate the transportation model that underpins the modeling that we do for Redmond 2050. They operate that on our behalf. So that's, it's a good day-to-day working relationship that keeps us connected on what's happening in our communities. We sat side-by-side at the Harvest Festival at Overlake Church in September or October. Our booths were right next to each other, so we had just the happenstance, chance to coordinate there. So that's kind of what happens at a staff level. There's probably more that happens at a director level also, if you want to add anything, Carol, for that.
Sure. So at the director's level, we all participate, directors from transportation and land use functions and planning functions in both Bellevue and Kirkland, at the planning directors' conferences, and at planning directors' monthly meetings to understand how our comprehensive plans interact with one another. I was just asking the mayor, I don't remember the last time that we actually had a joint meeting with the city of Bellevue. I believe it actually was around the Bellevue-Redmond-Overlake transportation study, which is what Jeff's referring to, is the BRATS model that underpins our transportation planning. I suppose if that is something that might be of interest, that would be something to take up with the mayor and council leadership, and the conversation about the benefit that that might have if you believe that the staff aren't potentially seeing things and taking into consideration those cross-city efforts, and ensuring that our comprehensive plans are aligned.
And I think, you know, underpinning some of the question, as well as also just, what is our role as leaders to be able to talk with each other and engage as we do this high-level visioning in the future? I know council leadership has put in the request to the mayor and COO to see if we could engage with the Bellevue City Council, since we actually had, I thought, a great meeting last year with Samamish City Council, to just be able to think about these kind of joint issues that cross. And I see Council Vice President Forsyth, who I think wants to weigh in on this as well.
Yeah, I know, this is a topic that, having a joint meeting with Bellevue is a topic that has been brought up at least in my last term, and something that I know could be of benefit, just for not saying that staff is not doing that work. We know that staff is doing that work, and I think that's what council member Stewart was antsy to throw out there. We know that work is going on, and we know that is happening, but just this past December, I attended the Bellevue Transportation Committee meeting where they were talking about bike lanes, and it was really helpful for those commissioners to hear that we're doing that work, too, and that our priorities align, and to hear it from, you know, a cyclist, and someone that lives near that area, and making sure that that work is being done. So I think it's just a continuation of conversation, and it's not to say that we don't trust that that work is being done. We absolutely do. You've proven that that work is being done. So I just think it would just further emphasize the importance of this work to potentially have that opportunity.
Great. Well, thanks for that dive on that question. I just thought it was an interesting one for us to cover. Are there other questions, comments, thoughts? Councilmember Fields?
So I want to talk about the small business part of this. I just have a boss that had a very irritating statement. He would say, "If you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there." And I think we know where we're going. What I'm not certain of, and I've asked this question a couple times in different ways in the past, is a more definitive understanding that the road actually will lead us there. So, and what I mean by that is, we do, you got community feedback that said, "Small businesses are very important to the character and the experience of living here." I couldn't agree with that more. And we talk about barriers for small businesses. Describing the problem is a good start, but I'm not, and I'm not trying to make small businesses a protected class, or have some advantages, but I certainly would like to see the barriers and the disadvantages. I'd like it clear in my mind that the road or the vision that we're taking will actually achieve something of substance. So I don't know if, and I've said this before, you know, is there a if-then analysis, or some sort of clarity that we, and decisions that we can make now that will be, for future deciders, a very specific and concrete guidance for how we can support and maintain and enhance the success of small businesses? Something convincing.
Well, I'll start, and I know Jeff will have a follow-up, but I think you're going to find the regulatory portions of the work that council needs to do more gratifying than some of the policy conversations. I know that, I think that there is general agreement on the policies. The staff did not make this up out of whole cloth. We talked to our community, you talked to our community. We looked and took guidance from all the other plans that you've adopted that were relevant. So the climate emergency declaration, the environmental stewardship action plan, the housing action plan, so all of those have your voice of intention on how we move forward. We took all of that information, and we're hoping you see it reflected, your own ideas and vision reflected in the work that we bring to you. When you get down to the regulatory level, you'll see the levers that we'll use to achieve the vision that's contained in the policies that are here. And I think that will help you connect that, kind of, oh, I see how this section of housing regulations actually achieves the objectives that we were talking about in the housing chapter. I see how the zoning in our provisions and the use charts actually help us get to the outcomes that allow small businesses greater access to neighborhood areas, and things like that. So I've heard you say that many times. I think you're probably going to like the regulatory portions, they're more concrete.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Jeff, did you have anything to add to that?
It's in the same vein. I would just offer that the regulations are some of the ways we set ourselves on the path to the goal, right? Other, two concrete things I can think of right now that we're doing that have a nexus with small business. One is the Economic Development T.Jak Plan that Philly Marsh Economic Development Manager is leading, and the other is the Driving Communities Technical Assistance Anti-Displacement Work that Ian Lefcourt is leading with the assistance from HUD to understand specifically what kind of anti-displacement measures we could take to keep small businesses that are in our community, and keep them in our community. So it can be programmatic as well as regulatory.
Thank you. We'll look forward to seeing those coming back to us soon. Councilmember Salahudin?
Yes, thank you so much. This is really great. A lot of detail in here, and I was just wondering, I might have missed this, but I have two questions, both in the land use section, the first being specific to Marymore Village, where I have lived, and it's really good to see that it's going to be designated as a countywide growth center. My question was, why countywide versus as another regional growth center, and if that's a little bit later, sorry if I missed that. And then the other question is a little bit farther down in the land use section regarding the housing units and the jobs. And I was a part, just as a resident back in the day, I was a part of a 2050 session where, you know, we, where should housing go? Where should jobs go? And, you know, we did an exercise, and a lot of people, you know, placed jobs and housing in areas that might not necessarily be these growth centers. And so how did we account for that, just in this process? And looking at, you know, where feasibly jobs and housing can go versus weighing where community input was placed, was there sort of like a give-and-take that we had to do to get to where we're, you know, estimating these things going?
Was that the LEGO event?
That was the LEGO event, yes.
I remember seeing you there. Yeah.
So as a brief reminder, the exercise was, we had small groups, and we set out tables that had maps of the city, and we broke it down into areas where you could allocate two different colors of Legos to represent jobs and housing units. Now, at that point, the total amount had already been provided to the city of Redmond. So the question is, how are we allocating them? And one of the key terms you brought up there was, you know, what is realistic, what's plausible, what could happen? And so we did look at our development capacity of land to see what's already developed, what's in the pipeline, what's underutilized. That was one piece. Another component is, we do just have higher-level requirements of what amount of growth can go where. Most of our growth does have to go inside centers. So that was one piece. And then we just kind of took a lot of community input on the experience, the vision, and tried to balance that all across those plausible economic development pathways. And then, of course, all of that, every single piece, was filtered through an environmental lens to make sure that we were meeting all of our goals there as well. And so it was a balancing act, and we provided kind of options of how it could come out, and we just slowly iterated until we got to the point where we are now.
We have online a tool that's called Story Map, and it's about the preferred alternative, and how we allocated growth into all the centers and outside of centers, if you want to go and look at that. It's really very, it explains like how the three alternatives came about, and how we came up with the preferred alternative. So we can probably link that somewhere for you to check.
Did you have a follow-up comment, Mr. Churchill?
I want to make sure we address the first part of the question about the Marymore Center. It's about scale more than anything, and Marymore is more of a scale that matches what the criteria are for the countywide centers, which is not to say that some point in the future can be considered a regional center, but probably not yet.
Thank you. Other questions? Or I'll also pose the question that was at the top here, especially given that we now have these vision statements at the beginning of each chapter, do we feel like the vision overall for each of these elements are capturing the vision that we've been putting forward and giving feedback on? I'm seeing some thumbs up. All right, well, I'll ask one question myself then, while you all think on that. And I think that's great feedback for you all, heading in the right direction. You mentioned about the work that you did with Eastside for All. I brought this up at the last session when I thought this was included in the last one. But I would love to hear just a little bit more about what we see that's in here that came from ideas from some of those great events that was done, and kind of what will be different from our last comp plan because of that work that we did to go out to our community?
Yeah, no, that's a great question, and I think even just the way that we're getting the input is different, because especially with this chapter especially, and having kicked off our contract with Eastside for All in the timeframe that we did, our work with them and the community-based organizations that they brought in- with them and the community-based organizations that they brought in on their contract have added value. So we co-created the materials with them. So we started with this chapter of like, "What's community design? What does that even mean?" You know, you ask someone on the street walking by, like, "What do you want to see your community, like, what's community design?" And they don't necessarily know or know how to answer that question. So we worked with our community-based organizations, like, "Well, how, like, what does this mean to you? This is what we think it means. How is a way that we can ask this question in a meaningful way that it's easily understood by a large variety of people?" So we came up with that, like, "Well, let's, we'll make you feel safe." It's about safety and comfort, essentially. So we asked, "What does it mean to be safe and comfortable in your city? Like, when you think of these spaces, what do you picture?" And so asking the question and framing the conversation in that way is a direct result from our work with them. And we've been getting a lot of feedback from Universal Design, creating community spaces. We've been hearing a lot about extra lighting, not directly, like, "We want more lights for safety," but like, "Hey, we really like these lights that are here," are some of the things that we've been hearing. And so some of the things we were already thinking about, so it sort of reinforces some of the ideas that we've had. And, you know, I think in the next draft, because since this is a new chapter, we're going to be coming back with another draft for this, you're going to see some of those updates from this, because this is kind of an ongoing conversation. And even the way that we've been doing outreach, you probably have seen like the postcards maybe around town, we've been trying to distribute them, and we've had a big stack at the library, and I picked up a stack about this high from the library today that people have been able to fill out. And so we've been getting really interesting ideas, you know, some a little off-topic, but really adorable, like, "We want more books about ice cream." But that also says, like, "Our city values ice cream." And so, you know, what can we take from that? But, so it's sort of, the way we've been engaging on this topic is a direct result from that. It's, you know, from student, that idea of even doing a postcard or doing a drawing or having people engage in a way that's not just giving us public comments, but that you can draw or you can collage, is also from our engagement with this new kind of engagement, because we had, from the previous topic that we were doing about complete neighborhoods, a high school student became aware of, like, Redmond 2050 and the work that we're doing. We met with them, and they're like, "Well, the stickers are cool, maybe we should do, like, new sticker designs." And then we're like, "Well, why don't we do postcards? And people can send us their ideas by drawing on postcards." So it's adding, I think, a lot of value in terms of our community engagement, and it's informing the way we talk about the plan in a way that we're receiving the feedback, and that's being reflected in that draft.
That's exciting. I can't wait to see the next draft.
It's like a long-winded response, but yeah. It's been exciting. Like, I just sat earlier, read through a lot of the postcards, and they were great.
Well, and I think to the point of what you're saying, that I think will be something that I will be excited to see in the final drafts that are brought back to us, and I brought this up a little bit last week in terms of the natural environment element, is while we want to keep things high-level and broad enough that they can last 30 years, I think using some specifics we're hearing from our community that help them to really envision what we mean when we're talking about this future, you know, maybe it's not ice cream-centered economy, but some of that is an idea, right? As something that where people can really kind of look and feel what we want is key. One area I wanted to highlight for the downtown vision that I think could be a little strengthened is we talk about it being a safe downtown, and in other parts of the comp plan, we talk about walking and biking. But I really see for our downtown, or my vision for 2050, I don't know about others, but I think we've talked about this one on our council, about wanting it to be, you know, truly the pedestrian zone that the signs say it is, and being really walkable, bikable, like, people moving around much more, and obviously with light rail coming through being this rail hub. So I didn't feel like in the vision it quite captured that specifically, so that's just a little piece of feedback. And I think where we can kind of build that out, that's great. Did you have a follow-up comment? I thought I had seen you.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that all this community engagement is based in the new policies that we want to make engagement, like, easy for people and to incorporate communities that haven't been incorporated into the planning process before. So that's why we're trying to do, like, very easy to participate, like, postcards, or trying to do, like, gamifying a little bit of the participation, like, with the LEGO activity, the board game that we did with the Complete Community, so trying to apply those policies right now into this comp plan. That's why the participation element is a little bit different, because it's right, we are actually applying the policies right now in the way we are getting community engagement.
Great. Are there other questions that came up? Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, that just sort of triggered a thought. In one of the slides, there was a bullet point about making sure we're on track. Like, I can't remember exactly what it said, but overview to make sure that we're achieving as we go what we want. This discussion that just happened, and I'm not going to, I'm not criticizing Redmond as it exists, so if you can, just lower your defenses for a minute. But, you know, I would submit that some of the things that we want, we don't have today. The biking, certainly, you know, like, I went to Edmunds over the weekend, I go there to umpire baseball games, and I'm shocked every time I go there, the number of non-chain restaurants that are available, hundreds of restaurants. I still struggle to go, "Where do I want to go eat in Redmond?" Not that there's not a lot of nice restaurants, but they're not that many. So I guess the question I have is, can we apply some of those oversights or evaluation of our long-term goals early on, as I think the statement was, you know, "We're doing some of those policies now," to sort of self-correct some of the things, you know, plan for the things that have to change in order to either, I'm trying to be careful, to change or redeem things that we might have missed earlier? Are we thinking about that?
One thing we're going to do, as part of the participation element, it calls for kind of ongoing evaluation of the plan. And so as part of this work, we will ask community members, council, planning commission, what are the things you want, we'll bring you some ideas for, like, what are the things that we should keep track of, but we'll also ask you, kind of, what are the things you want to keep track of? It's got to be, you know, a manageable number and information we can get our hands on and that kind of thing, to help us know that we're on track with the plan, so that we know if there are areas we need to make course corrections on as time goes on. So that's built into the participation element or kind of implementation of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. Just had one that I wanted to come back to, and I really appreciated in these drafts, when we begin to talk about the centers, this was the first time at least for me in observing this as I read the draft, but we begin to identify these more dense, more transit-oriented neighborhoods as places that are highly, highly desirable to live in our city. And that is, again, a shift from plans of the past that I think is just really remarkable and I was excited to see. So once again, firm support for the direction that we're headed in. I had a question on land use policy number 28. It's on page 97 of the prior packet, and it begins to, it shares a whole bunch of things, but it also calls on us to prioritize capital investment in necessary infrastructure for things like transportation, utilities, stormwater management, and parks. And I just wondered if this was also a place where we should add something related, some language around essential services? I got to thinking about the things we're trying to incentivize and overlay, perhaps, maybe with fire services, medical services, the possibility of a mini-town hall. If you all think that this is an appropriate place to put that, then that would be interesting to know, or if you think it's kind of captured somewhere else or taken care of otherwise, that's fine too. This is a lot of content, but just struck me as a spot that it could possibly go. So thanks.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? All right, I'll do my second round, and then maybe we'll close out here. Just a quick, if we're going just a few details, one question on the Town Center, DT 11, element, it talks, during, in that one, it talks about celebrating the cultural significance of Bear Creek and preserving open spaces and environmental areas. And I just wondered, I noticed that we added more on tribal consultation and partnerships in other places, but that area, it seems like, do we want to have language specifically that would talk about collaboration with tribal partners in that area, since I know there's a history there, and it might be nice to be able to be clear that going forward in that area, we in particular are going to make sure we do that work? So that's kind of a nitpicky one, and then I will follow up on one I've brought up previously. I'd say overall, for me, I think these are really going in the right direction, and I appreciate seeing so much of the feedback we've given in here. One thing I still don't see showing up in a lot of these elements, I think it shows up now once, is childcare. And so I'd just flag that I would love, the next time we come in 2050, I'd like to propose having a standalone, potentially in land use line, to just be able to share a little bit more of our vision of what we would like to be able to create around that and making sure that we have the capacity to be able to address childcare needs in our community. So I'll be following up with you all on some thoughts around that, but I've just been thinking about it since some of our past other element discussions about where do we fit in that piece of our vision? But I do think it deserves at least one part in the comp plan of a standalone element to say, "This is, when we think about growth, we think about housing and transportation and food and all the essential services, and one of those is childcare, and it needs to be in there, in my opinion." So that's one I'll be proposing, and just wanted to flag that I haven't quite figured out exactly where. So I think with that, I'm done with my questions. Final chance on this? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so say thank you. Can you remind us about next steps, Director Helen or Mr. Churchill?
Sure. So these second drafts, we will create final drafts out of to bring to the planning commission, but you are going to see us all of February to talk about housing and overlay regulations, so that's when you will see us next.
Great. That will be an exciting discussion. Well, thank you all very much, and thanks so much for your work on this. Really appreciate it and look forward to seeing the next drafts. The next item on our agenda is the Planning Commission recommendation for Phase Two amendments to the Redmond Zoning and Municipal Codes. Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this item. Director Helen?
Thank you again, and welcome. So tonight, we're talking to you about the Redmond 20, or I'm sorry, Redmond Zoning Code Rewrite, Phase Two, Redmond 2050 on the brain. Just a minor reminder, these are minor amendments to the Redmond Zoning and Municipal Code, and the Planning Commission's recommendation on the Phase Two amendments were originally presented to you on December 5th at the Planning and Public Works Committee of the Hall Meeting. And then questions raised on the Phase Two amendments thus far, which were on December 5th and earlier in January, are included in the issues matrix that's contained in your evening, this evening's packet material. So at this time, action on the Phase Two amendments is scheduled for February 20th. If the council concludes they're comfortable with the package as it's been presented, we would request that this item be added to the consent calendar for that date. And to take you through the presentation and the discussion this evening, I'm joined by Kimberly Dietz, Principal Planner with Planning's Economic Development Division.
Thank you, Director Helen, and good evening, Mayor and Council. If you like, I will pull up your issues matrix in order to walk through that. Is that the process that you would like to use this evening?
If you'd like to speak at a high level to any of the key questions, I think that'd be great.
Okay, yes, yes, we can do that. Did you want to see it? I think that was my question. Do you want to see it?
I'm sure we can pull that up.
Okay, thank you. There are 10 items this evening. The first one is from Councilmember Vice President Forsyth, and this is regarding cannabis in the RMC. So I would like to invite, he's in discussion right now, when he's ready. Staff had the opportunity to meet with our legal counsel regarding the questions on this particular item. It has relevance in the chapter regarding dance halls, and what it speaks to is how a dance hall would operate. So within that, you do have code portions regarding alcohol and cannabis and other illicit drugs. Well, it ends up, the legal counsel was able to dive in a little bit deeper and help us understand the two sections. One section is discussing alcohol, the control of alcohol, and that is because in a dance hall, there is a potential for someone to obtain a special event permit, and that could include alcohol. And then the way he phrased the second piece was that there is no special event permit that would allow the smoking or use of cannabis in the dance hall. So his recommendation at this time was to maintain the two separate pieces. However, we do recognize that this is an older piece of code and does need some work. So in the end, we would like to come back to this in the future as a work item, but we won't be recommending that the change as requested would go forward.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
Sure. I wasn't, I think I was, the issues maybe got conflated. I was interested in the terminology of what the dance hall meant, and then the cannabis issue was a separate issue more pertaining to the Parks Code that we recently adopted and the consumption in public, in a public park. So I appreciate the deep dive on, because at some point, this likely will be, as you said, a bigger conversation for us to have in the future, and state code may change, opinions may change, so I appreciate us getting kind of a head start on that. The change that I truly was looking for, though, was more pertaining to the Parks Code Amendment that we made in, I think, December of last year, maybe November. But yeah, we're kind of on the forefront of this one, so that's great.
Okay, thank you.
Great. So are you good closing those out? I think it was one and two on the matrix.
Yes, the second item is regarding the dance hall definition.
Yeah, I'm good to close this.
Thank you. Item number three is the responsibility of an owner or a tenant regarding improvements to sewer. So in this case, we also consulted with our legal counsel, and more information is going to be necessary. The reason is, is that this chapter of code includes many references to owners and the occupants. However, they act in different ways. Some are for notification, and therefore, both would be applicable and possibly helpful, but in other cases, it would be an investment to improve a property, and therefore, for those, the owner would be more applicable. So what staff is recommending for this one is that it be provided with the refinements in your ordinance, and legal counsel will guide staff in the specific changes going forward on this one.
I see a thumbs up. And I see the next three, I believe, were yours, Council Vice President Forsyth. So for the sake of time, I'll ask, are, do you have questions on any of those next three or that you'd like Ms. Dietz to be able to speak to?
I think if it's anything that has a proposed outcome or change, I think we should review it for public good. But if it's just something else that we're just keeping, maintaining the status quo, then I think we can move on.
Thank you.
So would you say, on any of the next couple items, do you have any changed recommendations based on the questions?
Yeah, the one change recommendation would be regarding the signage for beekeeping. And in that case, staff did agree with the comments from the City Council on the, get the page correct, on page six of the, or no, page four of the issues matrix, it does describe how the cautionary words would be larger at two inches, and that would be consistent with what we do use in the form of warning for our city standard detail signs, for example, like on the trails and for parking. And then the rest of the wording could be at the discretion of the designer. And then the rest of the wording could be at the discretion of the designer as well as to fit the sign size.
Great, well, always great to have a designer on our City Council who can flag these things. Thank you, Council Vice President Forsyth. So it sounds like we can close through item six. I would love if you could speak to the number seven about the, some of the family daycare refinements and next steps.
Yes, and this is also timely for me to bring forward because we are starting to implement some of the next steps that I described in here. So in this case, staff learned about the issue of the waivers or the desire for people to request a waiver some time ago, and we immediately started responding to how these would be permitted and their business licenses updated. What we learned very quickly is that the waivers do require the provider, the home-based daycare provider, to meet the local code for fire and building safety. And in that case, we weren't able to continue processing those waivers for more children. And so as a result, we've worked with the state, we've worked with providers, we've also worked with our building and fire staff in order to create a process through which a person who is either pursuing a waiver or having obtained a waiver. We'd prefer if they come in early, but even if they've obtained a waiver, they could still use this process to work with staff to review their structure, review the daycare-specific elements, ingress, stairwells and restrooms within the structure with building, fire, land use and business licensing to get the information they need to make improvements, if any, to their home in order to expand their allowance of children. In the event that they are not able to, then we are looking forward to more information coming from the state, the State Building Council, as well as the statewide fire marshals on how this waiver can be continued, to be provided for expanded daycare services, but also affordable daycare services, and how can those providers meet the letter of the code. So we're looking forward to a lot of information, and in order to make sure that the local daycare providers know what is going on and know what we are proposing to provide to them through the code, we will be convening meetings with them as well as with some of the service assistance providers in the region.
That's great. So in terms of the the action that would be a part of this code update versus future, can you just clarify that?
Yes, the action in this code update is simply to establish a pre-application meeting where someone can come in, meet with the relevant staff and learn what their specific structure and site needs to do to accommodate and provide a safe environment for the additional children.
Great, and look forward to continuing the conversations on that. One comment as we begin, hopefully we move forward with that and can engage would be to make sure that we engage with our culturally responsive, community-based organizations. I know, for example, I've talked with Indian American Community Services, they're often working with a lot of potential kind of home daycare situations and grappling with those who are doing a little ad hoc situations or other types of things that are springing up. So being able to kind of connect with various community groups, I think, would be great, where they're seeing that need and folks filling that in so they can actually get the right permitting and standards for that. So thank you. I'm happy to close that item out and look forward to the follow-up. The next item was on parking ratios. Council Vice President Forsyth?
I actually wanted to comment on the prior one. I just wanted to say I appreciate the consideration for the shall must conversation, and given that these are home-based instances, that folks may not be as into the legalese, I think that just makes it a lot clearer and making sure that we are holding the children that go into these facilities at the highest regard. So I appreciate that change. Thank you.
Oh, regarding parking ratios, that item, and I do apologize in the formatting in which I provided you the amendments, the amendments contain both work underway by Redmond 2050 as well as the rewrite, and they are color-coded. The items regarding parking are related to Redmond 2050 and will be coming to you in approximately March. The staff responsible for those is working with the Planning Commission right now in order to get their recommendation and bring it forward.
Great. Are you good to close that out, Council Vice President?
In March.
Okay, yeah, in March when it comes back. Great, and Councilwoman Rossella Houdin had the next question on demographics for community involvement. Did you have any further follow-up or you're good on that one?
No, that looks great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. The next question was Councilmember Stewart's. Councilwoman Stewart, do you have a follow-up on the Cara question?
I just have a follow-up comment for my fellow colleagues. So we had heard quite a bit of feedback and concern around the Cara, and so this was a really excellent matrix response. So thank you so much, Ms. Dietz, because you, exactly what we asked for, which was to respond to what's going on, what's still to be done. And the last paragraph or last set of bullets there is what the Planning Commission has also identified for further study. And I was just really impressed by this additional list of study items from them and look forward to continuing to learn through them. So this can be closed for now in the sense that we got the information we were looking for, I got the information I was looking for in terms of what the status is and really encourage, I'm encouraged by the Planning Commission's further inquiry, so thank you.
Wonderful, and I'll make sure to send a copy of this to Dr. Morton so that he can see we followed up on that question as well. Are there further questions? I think that brings us to the end of the matrix, but want to open it up beyond just the questions that were asked previously. Are there other questions on this item? I believe that it's proposed otherwise to be able to bring this onto the consent agenda. So before we do that, open it up.
Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Director Helen, Ms. Dietz, I just want to acknowledge, you know, coming along on the on the Planning Commission for the last year and now here and getting a very full view of everything that has gone in, just huge kudos to you and your staff for the consistency and the diligence whenever we've had questions, whether on the commission, and we've had lots of questions on the commission, and just seeing how promptly they responded and how thoroughly. So please extend from all of us just a fabulous kudos all the way around because of the level of consistency and thoroughness.
Thank you. We're meeting with the Planning Commission tomorrow night. We'll be sure to convey the message.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I believe that this is proposed for February 20th for the consent agenda. Is everyone good with putting that on consent? Okay, I'm seeing thumbs. All right, so I think you have your, go ahead to put that on consent, and I will join Councilwoman Nueva Camina. First of all, I'll say thank you for your work on the Planning Commission on this, and thank you to the whole Planning Commission, the staff for the work on this. I know this is a huge lift, so excited to be able to move this forward and then keep diving in via our work on 2050.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and good evening.
All right, the next item on the agenda is council talk time. I have a couple items for discussion. I'm just actually pulling up my email. We jumped to it pretty fast here. Hold on just a second, and then we will, I will bring that up. Just hold on one moment. So a couple of different pieces on council talk time. Oh, do you know what? I grabbed the wrong email here. Hold on just a second.
I'm gonna go ahead and jump in with one.
Yeah, jump in.
So we have the opportunity, as we've all wanted to be involved more in writing for our focus newsletter, so there is one coming up that is due on February 2nd. And if, we are asking for volunteers. It's 150 words, it's three times a year, we could use three volunteers. Last year, Council President and myself wrote all three of them, but we would love to have other people wanting to have an opportunity at that. And you can coordinate with communications staff on topics, coordinate with council leadership on topics, but three opportunities if anyone wants to jump in. I'm seeing a hand over there, I'm very excited about that. Councilmember Rossella Houdin, would you want to jump in later in the year? Would you want to do the February one? So there's usually a February, a summer and a fall.
Could we talk a little bit later, yeah, on how long it might take to write something before February 2nd? 150 words is not a lot, but just coordinating on all the topic.
Yeah, okay, we will coordinate, yeah.
Mayor Bernie?
And just to know that each focus has a theme and you have a lot of assistance from staff, and it's great. When I was on council, I wrote many of them and other members did too. So it's not trying to be scary, just I think it's great to spread the wealth.
Yeah, and I believe we actually have a new communications manager, so you'll be able to work with him. And one of the suggestions was maybe for this upcoming one to be able to highlight our new council members. So be a great, great one for you to be able to write. Thank you for stepping up on that.
Or maybe we, maybe we take that first one so they don't have to be on the spot for writing about themselves.
Oh, I guess so, yeah. Well, we can coordinate with you on that.
So any other folks that would want to jump in on that, please just let council leadership know.
Great, and I think we can also discuss further about communications at our upcoming council retreat as well. I know that's been a topic is kind of how we, how we think about communicating out with the council. So a couple different items for us for talk time that I had flagged for some of you, for all of you via email, but wanted to cover them here. First is, I got a request to be able to just go over what's going to be up on our next business meeting. So on the consent agenda, our plan thinks, including our minutes from past meetings, approval of payroll, as well as some of the things we saw in committee today, adding the new Parks and Recreation Department positions, confirmation of our Human Services Commissioner that we interviewed earlier tonight. There was, on the copy that I sent you, there was an item that we talked about in committee that I think we wanted more time on, so that one probably won't show up there. And then we'll have a staff report on Redmond 2050 and overlay in housing regulations. So just wanted to share that. If anyone has any comments or questions, we're also going to have presentations from King County Councilmember Claudia Valducci, as well as from Move Redmond. So that'll be an exciting business meeting. Hope the public will tune in to be able to see all the action. And then we also have some exciting things coming up. Just a reminder to council members as well as the public, next week is our fifth Tuesday, so we won't have a meeting next week. But we will have, for council, we will be doing a dinner with our state legislators in Olympia to be able to have some good discussions with them and advocate for city priorities. That is noticed as a public meeting since we will have a quorum of city council members there, and should the public want to attend, they could come and join in, so. And to that point, I wanted to find out from council members whether people are interested in carpooling to that event, as well as we also have the AWC City Action Days that I believe many of us are attending. So I wanted to take a quick straw poll of any council members that would be interested in carpooling to the Olympia event. You can just raise your hand next week. Okay, I'm seeing the three there. Okay. And then are others, is anyone interested in carpooling to the AWC conference? Looks like everyone is maybe going to go on their own way, but I see Councilmembers Stewart, Forsyth and Nueva Camina who are interested in Olympia next week. So I will follow up with you, just to be able to reduce our carbon footprint going there, so thank you. So the big topic that I was hoping we could discuss at this meeting, and I had let you all know a little bit ahead of time here, is our council retreat. As we let you know, we have planned our council retreat for February 24th. I think we're going to be able to have it here in the Alpha Bravo Room. The public is invited to come and sit and listen to us. We're going to be, we won't be televised, but you can come and watch us and listen into to the conversation should you want, and we'll have the exact times posted on our site soon. We have secured Tracy Burrows, who's Executive Director of MRSC and specializes in facilitating discussions with city councils on their processes and approaches to policymaking, and really want to be able to use this time to be able to think about, you know, how we work with each other, as well as some of the things we want to get done together. So the first question that we were hoping to gather before we meet with our facilitator to do some of the planning for that retreat is just all of your thoughts on, as we think about in particular, you know, what are some of the processes, procedures, norms or other ways that we do our work together, some for returning council members? You know, what are some of the things that have recurring kind of been questions that come up or sticking points that we want to talk through? Would love to hear your thoughts on that. For new council members, what do you want to talk about in the group as you think about being able to jump into these roles and work well together? What are some questions you have that we can collectively answer and talk about? I'll pause here and open it up to get some of your thoughts of some topics that we should put on the agenda.
I have a really minor one. During business meetings, when staff presents from that microphone over there, I find it really disrupting and annoying. I don't know why we made the change from them being here at the table. It's a lot more comfortable. I know that we tend to turn those introductory topics into study sessions, but I think we can do better than we've done in the past. And I just, I don't know if that's a mayor's decision or a council decision or a collective decision, but I find it odd. And I said, it's minor. I'm not, it's not a big deal to me.
Yeah, well, thank you for that feedback. Actually, we have shared that, so I think that's a good one for us to talk about, of what do we prefer. I think the feedback that we heard in asking the mayor about that, since that had come through, was that the staff had gone there in order for the public to better see them, since if they sit here, their back is to the audience. But I think it's a good one for us to discuss of kind of like, what is our goal in those forums and what's best in terms of our own discussion and working on the materials. So noted. Other thoughts, topics? Councilmember Stewart?
Sure, my top one, I think, is the role of the Ombud and how we want to work on that this year. Thanks.
Great, I heard her second on that one, that's good. Any other thoughts? Councilmember Nueva Camina?
For me personally, as a newer council member, a lot of it is just coming in and getting a read of the temperature and how we, how we do things. And then I'm sure that on the next one, being much more forthcoming on what I'd like to talk about and change, because at this point, being just three weeks in, is just getting a lay of the land and seeing, okay, where are we? How have we been in the past and how are we moving right now? And how do we want to be moving in the future?
Wonderful. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, also, not to do a buddy fest here with Councilmember Stewart, but she mentioned the budget process and budget priorities. And I just wanted to point out, we met, Councilmember Forsyth and I met with Director Finance earlier, and we will be getting a very, much fuller understanding of our financials in the first committee of the whole meeting for, and I think it's in February 13th or 12th or study session? Study session, sorry. So I think that we will have the foundation to sort of spend some time during our retreat on our budget priorities, and I think that's an important topic.
Yeah, definitely, that's great. And to share a little bit of what I was thinking in terms of, and what I talked about with Council Vice President Forsyth, is really as we think about the retreat, I think the first half or maybe a little bit more than half will be talking about how we do our work together, and then the second half will be what we want to focus on. And I think for me, as I alluded to earlier, I think one of my topics that kind of crosses across both is really, how do we think about the best way to process some of our top priorities? So items that have So items that have come up and been on our priorities list in the past, and then, you know, are there any other big priorities we want to add on there? I think one topic I'd love to discuss for the process is how we best use our committees to be able to process some of, of our, our priorities going forward. And then, and then do actually our budget discussion initially get, you know, some of the topics that, that everyone is interested in. That's when where I think what we'll do is send out a survey in advance to be able to gather some of the items that you're going to really want to see show up in the budget. And then we can have the discussion during the retreat about how we prioritize that, so we can convey that over to the mayor and staff as they're putting the budget together.
Council Vice President Forsyth?
And the intentionality behind choosing Tracy Burrows from MSRC was that she's going to have a really good handle and scope of what's within our purview and what's within those bounds. And those are conversations that I know we've struggled with in the past. So just having that expertise on hand so that we can really kind of dig into any of those trouble areas that we've, we've struggled with in the past is, is really going to be super helpful as far as we've discussed.
Great. Councilmember Fields?
So another topic I think that we should consider in the procedures section, and we did this when I first came on council, our city clerk did a couple of mini explanations, call them, I'm not sure if they were complete or robust, but on parliamentary procedure. And as an example, in our Committee of the Whole earlier today on the Cascade Water appointment, there was a, a sort of a moment where could we make a procedural motion to, to move that topic to somewhere? Either a Committee of the Whole meeting, or choices of a Committee of the Whole meeting, or business, a new business item. So I think we would be wise to understand, especially with, as Hank Meyer said, we are one of the youngest experienced councils in Redmond in some time, to be sort of briefed again on parliamentary procedure. I don't think there's anything necessarily bad that's going on, but I think, I do think it's important that we understand how we should move items and how we should communicate and, and conduct ourselves at business meetings, so.
That's a great point, and be great with Tracy Burrows helping us with, with that. I think one topic that has come up many times is sometimes when something comes up in a meeting, an idea, and we want to figure out how do we move forward from this, we have to decide between, do we need to make something more formal and set something for a date certain versus do we trust in council leadership or the chair to be able to follow up on that? And I think that's part of our ongoing conversations we've had in past retreats of what does it mean as a group to develop trust? But at the same time, part of why we have the parliamentary procedures is in order to promote fairness and ensure accountability. So I think it's probably a balance there, and I, I think that that's a great conversation to bring up, so thank you. Just, I would second that, I, it's a good one to put on there. Any other thoughts, comments? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you. My second one is on how we show up, and it's kind of three-pronged, because there's how we show up here in, in our own work, there's how we show up on our various regional boards and committees, and, and how we're driven to show up there. I think just at the beginning of the term, it could be good to have a conversation on that. And then how we show up in community. And last term, our community engagement, we had a great partner in Jill Smith, who helped us set some things up, but it might be helpful to just have a forward-thinking conversation about that. And something that's been important to me over the last couple of years, and I don't feel like I've really been able to yet fully realize this is, is council's role in taking government outside of this building. And so if there is council interest in that, that's something that I'd like to bring back to the retreat this year. Thanks.
Thank you. And I, I think that's a great one, and we can bring the previous list of options that was generated by Ms. Smith to the retreat to be able to discuss that. And I think it'd be good to get a sense also, I think in past discussions on that topic, one of our, our questions has been, what capacity do we as, as part-time council members have to be able to do different engagements with our community, as well as, you know, for our more formal meetings? So having that discussion in a retreat setting, I think would be great, to get a sense of what we want to do, and what does it look like to engage our community, and whether there are some things we can do that together. Other ideas? Okay. Seems like we got a good list to start. I've got a couple others on the list. So what I'll do is work with Council Vice President Forsyth, and we're going to draft up a more formal list, so that we can share it with our facilitator, we'll run some ideas, and then we'll bring it back to you all before the retreat, just to make sure if there's anything missing, that we do get any other pieces in the agenda. I know it can be easier sometimes if you actually see something, to think about what, what isn't there. So appreciate that. And then secondly, I just wanted to give you a little heads up on the next steps for our work on respect, equity, diversity, inclusion, and anti-racism with Anita Page. That's going to be part two of our retreat. We had a chance to connect with Anita earlier today, and, and originally I was thinking maybe we could get it done in the evenings, if we wanted to do some Thursday evening sessions instead of doing another weekend retreat. I think she feels pretty strongly that it would be great for us to be able to have more of a daytime, longer session to be able to, to work on that. But I did want to get a sense of how much appetite in March or April there is to be able to do a weekend retreat versus if we wanted to do like a longer early afternoon to, to evening session. One day, one day. It would be one day, yeah, either way. Is there, is there thoughts on this in terms of timing? Councilmember Salahuddin?
Councilmember Stewart?
Are you sure?
Yeah, let's not do it the day after our first retreat, because that's my birthday.
Okay. Okay, great. I have a question on that. Thank you. And thank you, council leadership, for already putting some, some work into this. Is this work we would be doing with the directors? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes.
So I realize that there are a few of us that might have to take PTO into, in order to accommodate a weekday, but if, is there a weekday option that, so that our staff don't lose a weekend?
We could look into that if, if that's what council is interested in doing. Councilmember Salahuddin?
Yeah, that did spark a question. What was the reasoning for not doing, say, a Thursday evening? And is that something that if it does work for council, it could be done, council and staff?
I think, I think it was mostly that she felt we just, she wanted to make sure we had enough time to be able to do the work together. But I, if, if, if that was what was going to happen, I think we do want to make sure that it gets done between March and April, so that we can actually make sure we're not impeding board movement on this in our city. Mayor Bernie?
I don't know if this would work, but sometimes in the past, when we've had like kind of special things to work on, we've used the fifth Tuesday. And on the fifth Tuesday, you also don't have a Committee of the Whole meeting, so there's a, the ability to have a Tuesday, late afternoon, evening, so it's not on a weekend. Don't know if it would work in this case, but that could be an option. I didn't know April 30th is a fifth Tuesday. But if you're trying to stay away from a Saturday, for instance, or Sunday.
There is a fifth Tuesday in April.
We could do that if, if folks are up for that. It looks like, it looks like there's some interest. So we can, we can circle back with Anita to look at that. So, and, and to share a little bit more of what I understood from our conversation with her, is that she's been working since the last time that she touched base with council, where we articulated a, our vision, as well as our compelling reason for change, to be able to provide our leadership direction on why we care about this work, and took that back to the directors, who now have been incorporating that into what they're operationalizing for an actual kind of plan going forward and framework for us to be able to do this work as a city. The directors are going to be meeting with her mid-February to really cement some of the, the details of, of that plan. So then it'll be able to come back to us, and what we were, we were reflecting on was that it might be nice for council to have a little time to be delivered, that, what's written down, think about it, and then for us to come together with the directors and the mayor, and facilitated with Anita to say, to finalize that plan, give our feedback as well, and, and then also to identify for each of the different parts of leadership in our city, what are our roles and responsibilities in making this plan happen? So what, what is the council's role? What can the directors and the mayor expect of us to be able to ensure there's accountability to this? And then where are the places where they're going to be leading and then, you know, sharing back with us about these impacts? So, and I think one of the key pieces that'll also be in this plan, that'll be great to be able to get everyone's perspective on, is also, you know, what are the metrics that we're going to measure ourselves by, to be able to ensure we're making progress on this work? So that's just a little preview of what, what is to come, and excited to be able to have that, and then to have a conversation altogether facilitated by our great facilitator to, to be able to do that work. So the next, oh, question, yes. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Just quickly, before we, we move on from, from possible dates and such, where, did we land somewhere? Because we threw out a whole lot of options. Maybe the fifth Tuesday of April, I heard a PTO weekday, a weekend, Thursday nights. Where are we with this?
I'm hearing a lot of different ideas, so I think the fifth Tuesday seems like it might be a good option. We can circle back with Anita to see if that might be a possibility, because we could have an extended meeting from, say, our usual 4:30 committee start time to our late night time, and that'd be a good amount of time if we wanted to do something like that. But if, if that's of interest to the council, otherwise, we can, I can throw out a couple other dates via email and get all of your availability.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Fields?
I think what Councilmember Nueva Camina is asking is, can we decide tonight? Can we decide tonight?
Okay, yeah. Is everyone good with the fifth Tuesday in April, if that should work with Ms. Page's schedule?
Yes.
My, that's great if it works with Anita. I also want it to work for the directors, so I think that for those who have small children who take spring break in the month of April, April 30th is beyond that, so I would hope we wouldn't have as many, as many conflicts. But anyway, just in addition to Anita, it needs to work for the directors if, if we're doing this in partnership, so that's my thought. 30th.
Okay, well, it looks like that's a, a date that could work. I will circle back and let you all know, and thanks for, for doing all the logistics here in this meeting. I just, I thought we should get this nailed down, so that way we can move forward and have these great discussions. So last item that I just wanted to bring up was also around public comment rules. We've had quite a few public comments on our public comment rules and, and that situation, and I just wanted to let you all know that Council Vice President Forsyth and I have been talking with our city attorney about some options to be able to address some concerns that have been raised about our public comment rules. But I will note that we have brought a proposal several times to the council of different ways that we could amend our public comment rules. For the new council members, our public comment is a limited public forum, so in our council rules, we can place limits on what exactly we, there's the scope of that forum, but we do need to place those as, as part of ensuring that, that we are being clear with the public of, of what are the kind of boundaries there. And so in the past, when we brought it, the council has declined to make changes, except for one time when we did make a change to reduce it from four to three minutes. And so before we bring back yet again some options, I did want to make sure, maybe just via thumbs, if people are interested in us bringing back some more options, and Council Vice President Forsyth can share a little bit about what some of those options are, if people are interested in discussing those tonight. But we could also put on a future study session agenda, a discussion about this topic. Just wanted to get a general sense of whether there is interest in us bringing this topic back. We get a sense in, in terms of thumbs up, thumbs down? Straw poll? Would you like to hear more about what types of things we might be proposing? I'm seeing some nodding heads. All right, Council Vice President Forsyth, would you like to, to share a little bit about that?
Absolutely. So we've had many conversations about what things we could do in the past, and we've never come to a consensus, so these are some new ideas. We would be adding language that items from the audience must be related to the City of Redmond or City of Business. So we understand that that is a broad category, but it allows us the ability to rein comments in if we, if they start to stray off course, and just provides us a little bit more boundaries. Language in our rules that allows the chair at their discretion to adjust the time of public comment. This is mainly when there's, you know, a room full, we've seen this room packed to the, to the brims, so this is more just to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak. They do this in the legislature. We would discuss potentially no less than one minute, no more than our three-minute rule, so that's one potential option. Clearer language for the chair to read at the top of the meeting that covers courteous discourse, and something that we can then point back to and redirect energy that is not, not welcome per our, our guidelines. And then identify this language that needs to be in the rules, so that we, we don't run into issues when we do have to redirect. And then for all of our consideration, we, we worked with Mr. Haney last year, maybe in the last two years, on hate speech language included in our rules, and so I can, I could read that, or we can have it for the discussion later, but, but this would just be having some more clear boundaries about hate speech and how that, how that would play into our public comment period. So it would include things like no racial slurs directed at the color creed, religion, ancestry, gender, sexual orientation, gender expression or identity, national origin, citizenship, mental, physical, or sensory disability of any individual, and it goes on a bit. So given that, this, this is a lot to consider, and we would want to put this on the FAC meeting in February, and Mr. Kenny would love to be in attendance so that he can actually answer any questions in real time and give us legal advice.
So given some of those topics, and it doesn't mean that we actually have to move forward on them, but I guess the question would, would be to the council, are you interested in us scheduling that discussion to be able to review this? I see a hand. Councilmember Fields?
So it's probably pretty clear that I'm in favor that we have this discussion, because I'm the one that asked you to do it, and I appreciate it. Thank you. I do think it's, it's an important discussion to, you know, walk that line of, we don't want to restrict hearing from our community. We want, and we're, and we want the community to, to have a voice. And I don't in any way not want to have that. But in all fairness to the voice that we should hear, I, you know, the, the options that Council Vice President Forsyth read, I think are really important, and important that we have all of the council weigh in on it during that, if we decide on a FAC meeting. And equally, maybe, no, not equally, much more important, my concern is that the, the legality of us, of things being said here, making sure that we don't, that we're clear, that we aren't seen as allowing it when we shouldn't. I, I don't know what, I don't want, I'm, I'm trying to be careful away from legal terms, because I'm not, some things just deserve having that lawyer guidance in, in presence. So I think it's really important that we have this discussion. I think it's really important that we have an understanding of the purpose of community voice, and it's really important that we focus it on what the city needs to know, as opposed to what, the, what's going on in the world. So I'm in favor of much of what I just heard.
Thank you. And I, I would- And I would say a theme that I think that we have all agreed on in past discussions on this is that we do so value the input from our public, and that we, that part of this is more a discussion of how we structure our meetings and think about this particular for, public forum. Was there another, I felt like I saw another hand. Was there another hand here? Or is everyone just thumbs up for, for Councilmember Stewart?
I think that we should think about this for a second, and, and really decide what we want to do and have a firm commitment, whether we're going to continue to study this or not. I've been on the council two years, and already two, maybe three times, we've studied these issues and not been able to move forward. So if we're going to study them again, you know, we should be willing to do something different. And I realize we have a different makeup of our team and whatnot these days, but whatever we decide here, I hope we can be magnanimous in our decision to either study because we are seeking change, or to not study because we have studied.
Thank you. Mayor Bernie?
Thank you. I appreciate that comment as well. We have gone over this multiple times, and I just want to, because, and to Councilmember Fields' point, there are, you know, legal boundaries about what we, we can say a lot of things, but what we can limit is actually very limited. So I just want people to go into this with eyes wide open, knowing that even if we say a statement at the beginning, there is not a lot we can do during a meeting if our rules stay very similar to they are now, even with a statement at the beginning. So there are other restrictions in order to limit the speech, create a limited time for speech, and then we can create more limits, but unless, unless you decide to do that, it does, we will have some of the same issues that we continue to have. So I just want you to go eyes wide open in that, knowing full well that even if we get comments from the community saying there are ways to limit, there are, but we have to make those changes in order to do it, and we still will probably end up with some of the challenge we still face, or have been facing.
Thank you, yes, and I know we all have a strong respect for free speech and constitutional rights. Councilmember Anderson?
I'd love to see a conversation in that discussion about the rules of potentially adding items from the audience to study sessions. So that people can talk to us more often. Thanks.
Okay, well, I actually am hearing from at least five council members. I'm not sure about others in terms of interest in this, but, Councilmember Nuva Kamina?
Thank you. Speaking back to when, specifically the night that I was sworn in as a commissioner, and there were items that were set in my, my community, my initial surrounding community is very diverse in a number of ways, and there were about three rows that were here to support me that night, and sitting among them and hearing some of the public comment that was being said that particular night, I believe it was January 17th of 2023, there were three rows of community members that were just vibrating. And I know that we want to make it a safe community, and we want it to be welcoming, and we want to, of course, have free speech. That was one of the reasons why I served in the military, was to protect that. And we also have to be asking, who is it safe for? Who is it welcoming for? And to, what is at stake? And I know that this is a very, very tender and limited scope that we've got because of the protections that we do have in place. And I would be very interested in studying that again, because we do have a different makeup of council this time, and saying, okay, well, what are the boundaries that, where is that edge, and what can we do? And can we, can we have something that is creative or perhaps non-traditional in the approach that we're taking this time? Because I don't want further Redmond community members or regional community members experiencing that again in our city hall.
Thank you. Great. Councilmember Salahuddin, did you want to weigh in?
I'll just echo everything that Councilmember Nuva Kamina said. That's, you know, maintaining that free speech while maintaining the safety and comfort of everyone in the community is critical, and so finding that balance, doing another study session with new members, I think would be valuable, and I, you know, never want to add more work than has already been done, but hopefully this will be new work that we can all, you know, collaborate on and figure out what the best course forward is, looking legally as well, and understanding, you know, the full scope of this, so I would appreciate a conversation.
Great, thank you. And I can also request, since we have, we gathered some great information in previous studies on this, to make sure that some of that is attached, especially of like what other councils do, just so that we, everyone has that for reference, in addition to some of the recommendations we can bring forward with Mr. Kenny. So I believe we might be able to bring this item to FAC, we'll look at the best place to put it, and if we are bringing it to committee, we'll work with the chair. All right, well, thank you all very much. I think those are all the items I wanted to bring up for council talk time. Are there items others want to bring up for council talk time? This is space to raise any issues, questions? All right, well.
Sorry, sorry, in our email, sorry, I have copied and pasted pieces from the Sunday night council leadership email, and it, there was a note about a salary commission update. Is that something for tonight?
I will just say that Council President, Council Vice President Forsyth and I have met with the mayor and the COO, and we talked about the process to be able to bring the salary, to reconvene a salary commission, or convene a new one, to be able to address those issues. It does require us amending the ordinance, which basically says that the, right now, it says that the salary commission can only be convened during, I think it's a mayoral election year, and so we would just need to change that to say it could be convened at any time. And so we're working with the COO to be able to prepare some language to come back to the council. I'm not sure if we have the COO files, if you could remind us the proposed date that we were going to put that on the agenda, but I wanted to give you all a heads up, since I know that council members have been wondering whether we're going to have another salary commission.
I can't recall the date, but it was the same time as we were going to have our lawyer here to talk about the items from the audience issue.
It's FAC committee.
Yeah, was it going to be on the sixth, then?
I'm still working with the attorney on timing.
Great.
So we're hoping on the sixth, but I'm still working on timing.
Great. So, yeah, and I would say if council members, we will, you'll get those materials in advance and take a look at the ordinance. If you have any proposed changes to that ordinance, we'll be amending the ordinance at that time, and then we'll be discussing after that the process, if we want to convene a new salary commission this year. As well as last year, we began but did not finish the process to, to be able to adjust the mayor's salary, and so, and it actually is written in the code that we do those things at the same time, and that's part of why we stopped that process as well, and so we likely will also be revisiting that, and there'll be some amendments in the ordinance related to that as well.
Quick clarification, FAC is the 13th, so is it the FAC or the other committee of the whole?
We were thinking FAC, so you're right, 13th.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's why, because it gave us a little bit more time to process that, and to be able to get our attorney to join us for committee.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks for bringing that up. Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Salahuddin?
I'm not sure if this is the right time to bring this up. You know, one of my, one of the things that I'm really focused on, and is really important to me, is youth engagement, and so I'm, I've been talking with Council President Kritzler, Council Vice President Forsyth, Mayor Bernie, and COO files about potentially bringing more, bringing youth into this space to share their feedback on a future city presentation that they've, that they've done regionally, and created cities of the future, which ties in really well with Redmond 2050, and so I think it'd be really interesting to hear from them, local school in Redmond, Middle School Stella Scala, and so I just wanted to bring that up. I don't know if this is the right forum.
Yeah, thanks for sharing, and congrats to that team, which I understand from what Councilmember Salahuddin has said is, are going to be going to a national competition now to share their vision for future cities, so hopefully they can come and share with us at some point soon, perhaps add items from the audience. All right, well, seeing no other items, if there is no objection, this meeting is adjourned.